All right, should we get started? I think Julie, you had something you wanted to kick us off with?
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm that we will have a meeting on March 17th in the evening and mostly for public comment. I don't know that we'll have any hearing matters, but we'll, Angelica and I will work to make sure that the public comment portal remains open and people can sign up. And then just wanted to flag again that on March 18th, we're having a joint COGCC AQCC meeting and that if folks want to give public comment during the joint meeting, they need to sign up through the Air Quality Control Commission signup process. As we get closer to that hearing date, we will put that information on COGCC's homepage under the news and notices to help, help everybody get directed and coordinated.
Thanks Julie. I think it might also be beneficial to send that reminder out on the, on the March 10th hearing next Wednesday.
Okay.
Might have more audience there.
Yep, yep, yep. I think that was the only piece that I wanted to check in on is just the scheduling component. As I, I will have to drop off at 11:30. So with that, I don't know if there are other pieces we want to jump into.
Julie, we're, we're, um, can you remind me, were written comments due today for the discussion around financial assurance?
Sure.
Sorry, can you remind me where we're going to find those?
They are not due until the 15th.
Oh, okay.
There's fives in both of them. So they're due on the 15th. They're going to come into COGCC's e-filing system. I'll see if there's a way to help navigate that or not. I'm still learning it myself since we just debuted it a couple of months ago. And through that process, we also are asking that stakeholders who would like to give a presentation to you, request that time and that presentation will take place kind of the 31st or the first time allocations and how that presentation process will work will really depend on the number of people or parties or organ, not parties, people or organizations that sign up. And we'll get a hearing officer order turned around to help people schedule and plan very quickly after the 15th. And you know, if it's too voluminous, I may come to you on the 17th and say, hey, we, we need to think about how to break this down or what makes sense. And then we will also have public comment per usual on the 31st to with people having the ability to just sign up for a public comment. I hope that folks use that time to talk about financial assurance, just because that's really the focus of those, those hearing days, but public comment is, is an opportunity to address the commission. Does that help Karen?
Yeah, and sorry, it's maybe just because Friday, but my brain feels fuzzy. Are we, we haven't already gotten a presentation about how current financial assurance works, correct?
We did get one, yes.
So, oh gosh, okay, I'm going to have to go back and look at the recording because I just feel like, I feel really fuzzy about it. So my bad.
I think the PowerPoint was, the PowerPoint was also uploaded to in the commissioner portfolio.
And we can connect with you if you want to have follow-up conversations also. Right now, staff is not planning on making a presentation during the 31st and the first, mostly to preserve time for parties. But if there was a question or something that we needed to address, you know, staff could come back the following week if that would be helpful. Or if, if there's, you know, a burning question that we should address, let me know and we'll, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, I think I need to go back again and look at finance, like assurance, bonds, blankets, blanket, all those things I need to go back and look at again. Okay. So that's on me. Thank you.
No problem.
Julie, could you remind me what's, what the parameters are for these submittals that we're going to be getting on the 15th? What is it? Was it wide open to everybody? I couldn't remember if there were any limitations in terms of the content of the submittals and, and who was submitting.
Anybody who's interested may submit. We wanted to use this as a broad stakeholder process under the 500 series rules to solicit input from, from anybody who really wants to provide it in a outside of the context of the formal rulemaking process and to kind of set the foundation. When folks have asked me about it, you know, this is my first time working through an informational docket too. And so what I, what I've been responding to folks is that to take a look at the 17 questions you all put together and to think about how you would want to answer those more in a narrative format than coming forward with red line language. I don't think we're really ready for red lines. We're exploring the topic and that to me felt like the right thing to do. If I miss the mark, I'll call those people back and correct it. But, um, so it's an opportunity for anyone or any organization to submit. We ask for a 10-page limit just to keep it focused and, and then also to, you know, call out any other resources that people are aware of to be able to filter into it. I think that the Public Utilities Commission and then, sorry, we asked for the deadline of the 15th to give a chance for you all to review what comes in in advance of presentations. That being said, you know, if additional information comes in during or after, I think that's fine. It, that 15th was really to drive the ability for you all to review and, and digest it. So that, that's how we've structured it. The other question I've gotten pretty frequently from our stakeholders is what happens next? And what I have told them is that I will be watching as closely as they will on the 31st to see whether there are additional areas of inquiry for the commission, right? Are there other questions you want to explore? Are there other things you want to learn? Or at that point in time, do you feel comfortable, you know, giving me the nod to go try to draft a set of rules to formally initiate the rulemaking process? And either path is fine, right? But those to me, that seems to be, to be the decision point on the 31st or April 1st is are we ready to go to rulemaking or do we want another round of information gathering?
Again, I was just thinking if, I think one of the questions we asked was, you know, what, what are other existing models that are out there? And so depending on what comes in, you know, I might be interested in seeing if we could invite, you know, some representative from wherever those other existing models are to present to us. But, you know, obviously we'll wait and see with what comes in.
Julie, that's all consistent with the things that I've been saying to stakeholders as well as I've had discussions is yes, narrative format, try to answer the questions, bring perspective into your narratives. That last question is kind of a free for all in case we miss something and folks can bring in additional information. And in terms of answering next steps, it really is dependent upon what March 31st and/or if we go into April 1st looks like and where, where we think we end up and, and what the discussion is going to be. And I've, you know, tried to indicate that I'm keeping it broad and, you know, I'm, I'm listening to everybody and, and so we'll, you know, think this is a good initial step for this new approach with professional commission being more involved on the front end of rulemaking for commissioners. And I think we've discussed this before, but oftentimes with the volunteer commission over the course of the many decades or whatever, they say, hey, we think we need a rule about X and staff just goes and drafts it and then presents it to us and the stakeholders think about it and then we adopt it. And I think that we all want to be more fully involved on the front end. And so we're again sort of create building the ship as we're sailing it. But I think it's going to be a fruitful effort and look forward to getting the information from folks on the 15th and having those two weeks to be able to fully vet through it. And our apologies for being a little bit late.
So I do have one question about this as I was putting some additional or doing some additional reading the last week about financial assurances and you know, I think SB 19181, if I, if I, and I'm paraphrasing here, but I, doesn't it say that we must consider not, not necessarily do, but must consider three parts? And do we need to have a formal like showing that we have received information on each of those three parts as part of this initial information gathering piece?
John, I don't know if we have to do that as part of this initial information gathering because we've not actually opened up the rulemaking. But at such time that we open up the rulemaking, I think we do need to delve into those three areas that the statute defined and make sure that we have a basis that we have inquired into those three areas. I think the statute also is not exclusive in that we don't just have to look at those because we do have our generic authority around financial assurances and that generic that each operator needs to prove that they have the ability to undertake the things under the statute. And Kyle came, showed up and then left. So I'm hoping that what I said is consistent with what he was about to say. And I apologize for jumping on top of you there, AAG Davenport.
No problem at all. Yes, that's consistent with what I was going to say. Consideration is part of the rulemaking certainly, but not necessarily as part of the informational docket unless you ask people to give information on that.
Which could potentially be beneficial as starting to gather information on ultimately what will need to be a showing on those three things to at least consider them. So you know, maybe I'll bring that up at the next regular session meeting that that's something that would be interesting to hear about as well. Those three particular topics. And I apologize, I didn't get those specifically into the questions that we put out, but I continue to read up on this topic and that's something that I just missed.
Can you add to those questions?
I think we could. I mean, for me, the three things that they want explored are issues that are discussed in the Financial Assurance Technical Worker Paper too. So there, there is kind of, I think there will be dialogue about it from our stakeholders and it can't hurt to flag for folks. And hopefully anybody listening in can hear it too, that exploring, considering those three pieces is important. And I do think we'll also need to fold in that consideration into the formal rulemaking process too.
So I can give a quick update on next week's informational docket unless we want to continue to talk about this topic. So just quick, it is, it is organized, it is set up, it's going to be the representative from CCAT wasn't able to participate, which is okay. Because we still have Eric Bergman from CCI that's going to come give the county perspective and then David Broadwell, who's going to come from CML, who's going to come give the municipal perspective on local government who are both been involved with these organizations for a long time and I think will be pretty informative as far as you know, answering the questions that I think we put out there for them. If you guys have any additional questions that you want me to queue them or have them be ready for, for next year, next week, geez, it's a tough morning. Then just let me know and I can forward those additional questions to them, but but yeah, I think they're excited to come share some thoughts with us next week.
John, just to confirm the first, we're going to do this like in two parts and the first part is like the nuts and bolts of land use and statutory authority, what local governments can and cannot do, maybe some best practices. And then the second part is going to be geared more toward kind of how oil and gas development has been addressed. And some of those, because I know we had some other questions too about reverse setbacks and how it ties into home builders and oil and gas operations and permitting and what chicken and egg, what comes first kind of stuff.
Yeah. I mean, I, I'm, I'm calling it that next week's the 30,000 foot level. And then part two is the 5,000 foot level. And while these two individuals are experienced enough to probably provide a broad view on some of the more specific questions, I've certainly told them that if they feel like any of the questions coming from us are too specific, that they can defer it to part two. So that may be better answered by specific local governments in part two. So that's kind of where, where they're at right now. And I, and I think both Eric and David are trying to tailor some of the information to not be totally generic, but specific to things that they think it's really important that we know as part of our ongoing professional roles. And so that's, they're, they're, they're working on that now. So.
Um, could they touch on the difference between like home rule and non-home rule and statutory? Because I, okay.
That's one of the questions that we asked them and they are specifically doing that. And actually it's also different from a county to a municipality from a home rule standpoint too. There's a couple, three home rule counties, but they really have no additional authorities per se, whereas a home rule municipality really does have a lot of additional authorities. And so they, they'll hit on that.
And, and John, I know we have this in, in some of our materials, but could you just spell out those acronyms just for people listening who might not know?
Yeah, CCI is Colorado Counties Inc. That's the county lobbying organization. And then CML is Colorado Municipal League, which is the municipal lobby organization.
And CCAT was that?
CCAT is another county lobbying organization. It's Colorado, sorry. Counties and Commissioners Acting Together. And that's a, that's a entity that was started about six years ago.
Okay, thanks.
And then just one other thing is I did present an update on the mission change rulemaking. And the upcoming rulemakings to Club 20 yesterday afternoon. And I think there was about 60 participants in the meeting and lots of good questions and really appreciative of us, a representative from the COGCC being there to share information with them. Some of the questions were tough as you would assume coming from Club 20, but I think it went well and certainly they are open to future meetings and conversations with us. And so it may be a good idea for all of us as a commission to go in front of them. Maybe in the fall might be a good time to do that. So.
All right. Thanks for that reach out. I think that's outstanding. I've presented to them back when I was director and I do believe that they appreciate commission reaching out and providing answers. I think that transparency is part and parcel of what we're doing. And so I appreciate that. Hopefully you were able to use the, the sort of form PowerPoint that we put together that sort of explains what we're doing and you know, what, where we've gone over the course of the last year or so. I too, just in terms of segueing off of that, met with the members of the affiliated local government for about an hour and a half yesterday and I've had a good discussion with them, just in general, you know, where we are, where we're going. You know, reached out to in terms of creating, you know, an ability to have dialogue with individual governments about their regulatory approach and our regulatory approach and using some of the tools that we've developed in our, um, in our regulations, you know, for the sequential go to the local government first to the go at the same time. And just, you know, the discussion was, I think, very helpful and pledged to continue to have those discussions with those groups.
Related, sorry, go ahead.
No, 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 go ahead.
Um, I was just wondering if, if we all are vaccinated by the fall, if we could tentatively schedule maybe an all commissioner trip to the western slope? And maybe we could have one of our commission meetings out there and maybe tour a couple of locations.
Yeah, absolutely. Karen, and are we cool going with first names on these work sessions?
Yes.
Um, no, I think that's great. And West Loop Coga, Coga is interested in that. And you know, I think if we could go have a meeting in, you know, Rife or Glenwood or even Grand Junction, um, that would be great. And you know, John, you know, you and I and, and Director Murphy went on the field tour out there on the west slope and it is, you know, different than the tours that we may have been doing here on the front range. I know Karen, that you recently toured Ivy, I believe. And so I definitely want to do that and have those reach outs. And you know, I'd also like to get down to La Plata County for a meeting. And you know, again, have a meeting up in Greeley so that we're moving around. You know, and let's just hope and pray that the, you know, the vaccines are, start to proliferate and we're able to get them and we're able to have some form of, of, of meetings like that.
Thanks Jeff. I'm going to jump in really quick just because I need to drop off in two minutes and wanted to provide one other update, which is the Department of Natural Resources long budget request went through the joint budget committee figure setting process yesterday without change. So the budget that COGCC has requested has, has gone through the JBC process. And now we're just watching the long bill and seeing if there are going to be any changes suggested by legislators. So that was the one update I wanted to share before I drop off and wish you all the best this afternoon.
Julie, can I put a bug in your ear too? Just could you let us know if, if there is money in our budget to have a contractor do some sort of training with the commission on, you know, what makes a high functioning commission and one that does meaningful community engagement well?
Yes. Yeah. Can I add that to our, yeah, discussion on Monday, Karen?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Thank you guys. Have a great afternoon.
Thanks Julie.
Hey, I will, I will point out that if anyone is doing presentations on mission change and upcoming rulemakings, that, that PowerPoint that Jeff and Megan developed is exceptional. It's really, really well done and easily manipulable for, you know, for, to put your, your, your personal information in there.
Awesome. I'm, I'm glad that worked out. And you know, we've been developing that as we've gone along through the rulemakings and we'll continue to develop that. So once we get through financial assurances, we'll add a few slides into that. And it's just helpful to, to sort of have that document. We also, just for your information, I've, you know, since I started here as director and then became chair, I've also kept kind of an ongoing accomplishments document so that we can keep track of the things that we're doing. Um, and so, you know, we can get access to that for you guys as well.
Great.
So, um, I don't know if we're ready for it, um, but Karen, I know you had sent around the performance evaluation sort of thing. Did we want to talk about, I haven't read it yet. I apologize. But you know, we could talk about that or we could take that up later. Um, you know.
I wonder if we could just continue with info dockets updates and, and Jeff, I didn't know if you had any more on the part two of the local governments and then we can go through the other ones that were.
Yeah, no, not a problem. So I've made initial reach outs on the part two and would be hoping to have that rounded up by early next week on for the 24th. Is that right, John? That we were shooting for? I believe so. Yeah. So, um, I, um, I want to get folks solidified before I reveal whom we're talking about, but I'm, I'm trying to get kind of a the full perspective of, of terms of, of specific local governments, as well as some of the specific attorneys that have worked in this arena for a long time.
Great. Um, yeah, Bill?
Yep. Sure. Yeah. So, so I'm putting together the info docket for surface operations. Kind of in general with a bunch of other subtopics tied to that and shooting for the April 3rd date, I'm putting together kind of an invite document that I'm going to run through Kyle and send out early next week to, to generally stakeholders who, who may be interested in presenting on the topic. I want to, a little concern I have is kind of the, the size of the topic and the number of presenter, presenters and, and how quickly that could grow. So there may be some consolidation there and I'm likely going to circle back up with you guys. Once we have a little more of of an idea of who's presenting to see, you know, if we wanted a high grade, what we wanted to hear and who we wanted to hear from. Try and make it more efficient for, for that date. So April 3rd is what we're planning on.
Great. And, um, I've got to take a quick call, but I'll be.
Great. And I, I am, I've been having conversations with staff related to interim and final reclamation, which is kind of next on our list and have got kind of a pretty good idea with what the staff presentation would look like. And so I'm going to put together an outline for all of you to then react to and, and send me what questions you might want answered, which will I think drive, you know, who we might consider as additional invitees. If any, we may, it may just be a staff presentation. I'm not sure. But yeah, just, just letting you know that that ball is rolling and I'll have something to you guys in the next few days. Um, yeah. I don't remember who we had for the life cycle of a well. Was that you, Bill, also?
That was me, Priya, and I haven't done anything on that yet.
Okay. I think that's, that's way down the road. I think in May-ish is what we sort of had. So.
Yeah, it's down the road. I think it's going to be an important topic and I've talked to some stakeholders about it just in general, without, without kind of soliciting for a specific date yet. But you know, with, with what we're hearing from from, from our public comments and whatnot, specifically kind of with, with regard to the operations, the drilling operations that we heard about on the Ivy pad and the completion operations that we're hearing about on the Cameron, Mejay, Papa Joe, I can't, I can't get those confused, which ones, which. But anyways, I think it's an appropriate time to have that pretty soon. So I'm excited to get that kicked off and hopefully get some questions answered and, and get some more information on that from a, from a technical perspective and from an operational perspective. So.
Great. Karen, did you have updates on community engagement yet? I know that's also down the road in terms of our kind of overall.
Yeah, I kind of, I kind of want to set the stage with a training with the commission first. And so I'm going to, and Julie and I are talking on Monday and maybe we can work some of that stuff out. And then I'd like to make sure that if you all have some things that you'd specific, specifically like to concentrate it on is how we do business from a commission, making sure that we're transparent, we have meaningful engagement, et cetera, that we get those answered. And then we'll go on to the other subparts and I have something put kind of sketched out in an outline that I can share with you and we can start fleshing it out if you want.
That sounds great. And I, Julie and I have been just talking about or just finding out some additional information from DNR with respect to the the DEI working groups that have been in place. And you know, there is one through the DNR on community engagement, but we're now trying to figure out how we can extrapolate that or have our own sort of internal work within COGCC. And yeah, I can, I can maybe follow up through Julie with you on, on that. But I think, you know, to me, it sort of makes sense that you would either be a lead or a co-lead with what, I don't know exactly what's, we don't know the full extent of what's been happening on the DNR side and, and the COGCC people that have been working on that. But we're trying to get all that rounded up. But I think that's, that's kind of the, the general thought process there. In, in, you know, kind of how we connect that with, with what you've already been talking about and planning.
And, and I know, I think I might be the person most interested in this, but I'm interested in perhaps inviting someone maybe from the School of Mines to give us like a TED Talk on the geography of the state as it relates to oil and gas development and the different basins and the fields and the plays and how we use those words and the different kind of drilling that happens in those locations. And I, I think that could just be kind of a low hanging fruit. And I realize it feels kind of late in this process since we've been on the commission for several months already. It would just, I, I feel it would be beneficial to me. And I, I know it's further down on our list of things to do, but I also think the longer that we wait, the more kind of odd it seems that we might be looking at that as we continue to do all these rules and regs around oil and gas. So I, I don't know if I'm the only one who has that, that kind of keen interest in it. And if it is, I can just work on my own on, on reaching out to some folks to get better information around that.
No, I think, I think that that's good information for all of us as well as the folks that listen in to our meetings. You know, I also would suggest Karen, you know, maybe touch base with Dave Andrews too, because we've got, um, you know, in any number of geologists, scientists that would be able to help with that. And that might be a little quicker term than.
I didn't, I didn't know though, if staff was feeling overwhelmed. I didn't, I didn't know though if staff was feeling overwhelmed and to try to find someone else to do it for us. I'll talk to Dave and just see what his work looks like or feels like if he feels overwhelmed. I don't want to add that because I know they've been working really hard. On the guidance and getting everything set up for new permits and stuff. So I'll check in with Dave. That's a great suggestion. It doesn't have to be long, but I wouldn't mind just a kind of a TED Talk kind of, here's how it all works.
I think that would be really interesting too. I would, I would appreciate that and maybe that, you know, we sort of have been planning these kind of bigger info dockets every couple of weeks. Maybe that could be. Something that's just at the beginning of one of our normal weekly hearings in between those others, so.
Absolutely. Karen, I might have some contacts. I did at one point. I don't know if they're still there at RMAG, which is the Rocky Mountain Association of Geologists. You know, there may be someone, they might have a canned, you know, 101 presentation that they give out that may be helpful, even if they don't present, if they just send it to us. We can kind of go through the slides on our own if we want to.
Awesome. Thanks, Bill. That would be great.
Yeah, I'll see what I can find.
I don't know if anybody wanted to go further down our list on the info dockets, but. At least for me, I, you know, I was just thinking that we just wanted to update on these more near term ones, but. Anyone else have anything? Okay. Then yeah, maybe do we want to move on to the performance eval discussion unless anybody else has anything else?
So. You, so those of you who've been in the state system for a while know that there's a annual performance evaluation. And I was, I think we all kind of thought it would be good maybe for us to have some performance goals as a commission as a whole. And then some individual goals. And so I sent a template that's the state's template. For, you know, what your goal, what your performance goal might be and then what the measure is. And then sent some background information that you can choose to read or or not about how boards. And commissions set up, sometimes set up, how they set up their performance goals and how they evaluate them. And. In particular, there's some information about, you know, it'd be good to have an aspirational goal and then. A couple of more, I don't even know what I want to call them. It's in that article, but. Maybe goals that feel more kind of operational. And so I just sent that to everybody when I think about what those goals look like. For me, maybe one of our aspirational goals. Could be around how we function as a commission. Again, I know I keep hammering on this like transparency and community engagement and. And I already, I already think that we are doing pretty well, but I think there's probably some ways that we can make improvements. I know that one's hard to measure. We may also want to talk about how we'll get feedback at the end of an annual assessment and who we want the feedback from. We might want some feedback from our partners about how we're doing as a board and and getting some, using that feedback loop to make improvements, so. That's just kind of where I am at that and there should be some stuff in your inbox.
Yeah, and I thought that was helpful, what you sent and. But yeah, I mean, I, I. It's everywhere. It sort of does this differently in terms of like, you know, how deep you go into talking about the goals or and the metrics, you know. So, yeah, maybe we could just have a little bit of a discussion. I mean, to me. One of the big goals obviously would be. The financial assurance rulemaking. And there's a few other. Bits and pieces, you know, that kind of relate to these, these, what we're doing together with coordinating on these info dockets, but some of them may be more on the individual side of things. I don't know if anybody else had given this some thought, but that was just the first thing that occurred to me was, you know, the financial assurance rulemaking and getting through that. But maybe also along the lines of what you had suggested with the site visits, especially getting out to the Western Slope and. You know, trying to engage with more folks out that way.
I think another goal is probably going to maybe be around. How we're going to start conducting review of permits and what that looks like so that there's some consistency and. Training and figuring out what that's going to look like since it'll be, I think, John, you and you and Jeff have been through this already before this kind of quasi judicial process. But that might be something else that we want to put together as a goal, what that, what that's going to look like.
Yeah, when I, when we first started talking about these goals, I think right after we got that email, I jotted down just kind of. Three quick ones that I think were low hanging fruit that have since been addressed and so, you know, finish the rulemaking, right, financial assurance and. I don't know if you want to delve into, you know, the other rule makings with the permit fees or the worker certification. But but that, you know, those are pretty obvious and pretty big lists to think about. The next one was was develop, you know, continuing, developing our, educating ourselves and developing our expertise as commissioners. And so, you know, having a goal with kind of the informational dockets, keeping them ongoing and evergreen, you know, on the on kind of the two week cycle we've been doing. That can be a pretty smart goal, right? You know, it's got all the, all the relative. All the relevant aspects of SMART. And then the third one, I don't know if it's Karen or Priya just mentioned it, but about visiting really the major operating fields in Colorado. And maybe not even just the the major operating current operated fields, but also some of the legacy fields. I think to really give us a perspective of some of the things that our stakeholders in some of those counties have shared with us. That we learned through the previous rulemaking and have heard of public comment, just really put eyes on it. Get that, you know, that full visceral experience of what's going on. So those are kind of the top three that I jotted down quick. I think it's already been addressed, so you've got my buy in for that.
Okay. I can start filling some of that stuff in if you want me to, just to get everyone's juices flowing and then we can figure out. Measures for them.
Sounds good. I like that. You know, one other thing I just, I know we we've talked quite a bit about the site visits and the Western Slope, but I think. In light of some of the comments in the Senate confirmation, you know, probably Eastern Plains as well, making sure we get up there. If we do kind of bills, sorry.
I mean, I do think that's important too, because I think that. You know, you've got the major plays, right? And so major plays being like predominantly Weld County, Garfield County. But then there's also the, you know, ancillary areas around those major plays like. You know, Morgan County and Logan County and then the southeast Colorado with Los Animas County and some of the areas down there. Certainly La Plata County, Montezuma County, Dolores County would love us to come see what's going on there. And then not only Garfield County, but Rio Blanco County. Moffett County, Jackson County. As well as the North Fork of Gunnison County would also love to see this and so. So there's, there's some country we got to cover.
Sure. I'm ready for the road trip.
And I do think something on the eastern side of the state where I think during testimony we heard it's just a different animal and it. Looks different and I think that would be good for us to get out there as well. So maybe we could. Allocate out how much time we think it's going to take us to get to all these places and figure out how we may be able to fit it into a 12 month timeframe, but I think it's a really great idea.
Three week road trip. What are you talking about?
I've got, I've got an 1986 RV. We can hang out on the road and all fit in there if we really want to, so. I got a tent.
I'm a tent guy.
All right, I'll start, I'll start putting that and then then people can start filling in all their pieces that they think should be included, but I think we all kind of have alignment then. Finishing up the rulemaking that is required, including financial assurance, kind of the informational dockets and continue continuous education. And then site visits. That sound good. Okay.
That sounds great. And along with the continuing education type of thing or developing expertise. I would probably throw in some of the DEI stuff in into that. I can, you know, populate that as we develop it out, but I think that'd be something there.
I would support that being a standalone goal of just of the commission just understanding its place in in the DIA, DEI. Wig for DNR, a lot of acronyms there, but but that's, yeah, I think it could be on its own.
Okay. I appreciate that. Perfect. Great. Do we, do we want to talk at all about what we're thinking of for individual goals or? To a certain extent, it doesn't really matter. It's sort of, you know, what we each want to accomplish, but it. I'd be open to discussing some of that if we want to.
I have not given enough thought to it to be able to share today.
Fair.
Besides a three week road trip, I mean, that was in there, but.
Yeah, I have a three week road trip on my personal goals too. I'm trying to keep it in Colorado, though. No, you know, for my personal goals, I don't have anything specific just yet. I still need some more time to to kind of think about it and I probably will take up until. You know, when I submit that later in March to finalize that, but you know, I might just dial in deeper on some of these big three goals that we have. As just kind of how my individual part is or how I want to, you know, do that individually. So very generic, but that's kind of what I'm thinking so far.
Yeah, that sounds good. And actually, it's funny, I was just about to say this and I saw a comment pop up in the chat, but. When we do our site visits, I think. I would love it if we could also engage with the communities. If that's possible, I'm looking to Kyle if there's any issue there, but I. You know, if there's an opportunity to even just. You know, maybe it's a public meeting that gets, that gets, you know, broadcast, but if we could. Do that as well, is that possible?
Yeah, and that's what the volunteer commission did as well as we did moved around the state back pre-COVID. We would have meetings and it allowed for people within those communities to be able to come speak to us and. Oftentimes we would do them during the evening to give folks a time to not have to take off from work, et cetera. And so, yeah, I mean, you know, their. Agenda is as a public, you know, informational listening session and people can come talk to us.
Great. I don't see any objections from Kyle, so I think we're good. Great. Yeah, the only thing that I sort of had on my list in terms of individual goals was. The. The, oh my gosh, I'm suddenly blanking on the term biological. Why can't I? It's Friday. My brain's not working. You know, the, I want to say biological sciences, but that's not it. You know, I'm talking about the. Wow.
You're talking about the discussion around like the sensitive habitat areas and.
Yeah, but.
Biological resources and.
Biological resources. Thank you. Yeah, that biological resources, that's what it was. Sorry. My brain is not working.
It's okay. I can't remember the financial assurances presentation, so.
It's all good. We have a lot.
Hashtag winning.
But yeah, no, I would like to kind of get that up and running sooner than later. And start to figure out how we do that. And as I think we've already talked about, if more than one of us wants to participate, we just have to notice it and. Put it out there. I don't, Kyle, I don't remember. Do we, we don't need to broadcast it but or record it? Or maybe we need to broadcast it but not record it if there's more than one of us involved in a working group discussion?
Well, I think you're thinking about open meetings law and yes, two or more commissioners are involved in discussion of public business, then that needs to be an open meeting. Notice to the public and available to the public to listen into at least.
Okay. So it would need to be available for listening. Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
And Priya would definitely be interested in listening in. It's not my area of expertise, but it's for me would be a learning opportunity, so. You know, maybe those meetings where you think it would be informational and good for the commissioners to hear at certain presentations or subjects. We could attend those and then if you're going to be the lead on that, for example, then you could just let us know which of those meetings you feel would be important for us to listen in on. Then you wouldn't have to worry about every single meeting or I don't know.
Right. Yeah, I'm thinking maybe the first one or two where we're sort of hearing from different stakeholders about what they're wanting to get out of it. You know, might be the ones in particular that would be useful to have some of you involved, so. Anything?
I'm good.
I'm good.
I just responded to a Q and A. We're going to get a copy, kind of a generic copy of that PowerPoint up on the website. Some folks had asked, you know, if, I mean, it's a public document. I'm happy for it to be out there. And so we'll get that on the website for anyone's review and and look over.
I hope everyone has a good weekend.
You too.
Yeah, thanks, everybody.
And John, I just have to know, was I hearing a rooster in the background?
There's roosters.
I definitely heard that as well and I knew it wasn't.
That's definitely new. I love it.
Great. Have a great weekend, everybody.
Bye, everyone.
Everyone.